Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Dyton Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, November 9th, 2022. It is 6:04 PM. It is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in person at Old Town Hall on 111 Somerset Avenue. This meeting will be, the Zoom login will be ID number 842-2698-5808, passcode 565097, Public input may be provided using the following methods: by contacting the office prior to the meeting at boardofselectmen@dyton-ma.gov, or via Zoom or call-in with the information given a minute ago. This meeting will be recorded, however, due to technical difficulties, Channel 9 will not be live this evening. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. With that being said, I will call the order. Mr. Pacheco.
Present.
Mr. Karen.
Present.
Chairman Hall is also present. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag at a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, three members of the Dyton community have passed. Dolores M. Schabbs Carpenter, 82, of Dyton, passed away on Wednesday, November 2nd. Mrs. Carpenter worked for Reed Theon for 50 years, retiring in 2009. She was also a communicant of St. Nicholas of Myra Church and formerly a member of St. Peter's Church. Joanne Riley passed on October 24th. She was employed in the financial world. She was 65 years old and also a member of the Dyton Community Church. And Linda Di Gregorio, 73, passed away on Saturday, November 5th. She was the wife of Mike Di Gregorio, to whom she was married for 50 years. Could we have a moment of silence for these three members of our community? Thank you. First order on the agenda this evening is a presentation by Nicole Mello, public health nurse, in regards to the flu and booster clinic. Ms. Mello, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. As Mr. Hall said, I'm presenting on the Town of Dyton's 2022 Immunization Clinic. I gotta remember to do this and talk. This is a lot.
Both in my life.
Now I feel bad, it's not doing anything, Mike.
It's not?
No. Oh, wait. Okay, there we go.
You're good?
Yes. I don't know if I'm good, but it's moving. All right. So for anyone that's not familiar with me, here's a quick introduction. My name is Nicole Mello. I'm the public health nurse for Dyton. I was appointed in October of 2021. You can see on the slide, that's just a little of what I do for the town for anyone that's not sure what the public health nurse does. So the purpose of the clinic was to promote health and wellness for our local community by keeping vulnerable individuals vaccinated against seasonal and acute health threats. This year's clinic was conducted on October 22nd, 2022. This year's location was primetime. We partnered with Manette. They were the supplier of the vaccine, as well as they supplied the staff that administered it. They also supplied us with the online scheduling platform, as well as social media flyers. This year, we had 45 participants attend and receive vaccinations. I'll have a breakdown of that later in the slides. So coming away from my 2021 clinic, I had some goals I was looking to achieve. I was looking to increase the participation rate. I was looking to add additional services. I also was looking to conduct the clinic earlier in the season. According to the CDC, the season, the flu season, can vary. It increases in October, and it can peak between December and February, and can go as late as May. So having the clinic earlier in the season would extend the period of protection. I also was looking to extend clinic hours. So this year, some of the success that I had was participation rate was improved by 375% over 2021. We were able to add the COVID booster, which wasn't, hasn't been offered in Dyton yet. The event was conducted on October 22nd. This was 58 days earlier than in 2021, when we had the clinic on December 18th. I also was able to extend the clinic by one hour. Last year, we went from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This year, it was 9:00 to 12:00 PM. So as much as this year wasn't a success, I came away with some lessons learned and looking forward to reaching some different goals next year. I'm looking to promote online registration, to reduce demand for Health Department to field phone calls. After attending the clinic, I saw that anyone that didn't register online had quite a lot of paperwork to complete, and the residents seemed frustrated after discussing it with them. A lot of them did have the capability of booking online, but they just weren't aware it was available to them. I would not get away, come away and not have the calling feature, but I would like to minimize it after what I saw. I'd like to generate a frequently asked question sheet for the Health Department phone personnel to reduce the number of surprise or unanswerable questions. Todd and Roz, who are answering the phones, this is kind of without, not within their scope of practice, and they didn't have a lot of the answers for some of the questions that were being asked. And I want residents to feel confident in what we are doing and that they are getting the correct information. I want to continue to add more services. I want to add more services that aren't immunizations, some other things that promote health and wellness, maybe having some other departments involved, like police and fire, have it more as like a wellness fair, and then happen to have the flu clinic there as well. I want to improve community education in advance of the clinic. During the clinic, I overheard a lot of misinformation about immunizations, and I look to educate the residents better so that they can make an informed decision. I'll address that later in my slides. So here is a breakdown of the 2022 and 2021 vaccines that were administered. So in 2022, we had the Moderna bivalent booster, 20 residents received that, the Pfizer bivalent booster, 13. We had one PD Pfizer, and we had 34 flu, in comparison to last year when we had 12 flu. That other chart is just another way of looking at the comparison of our 2021 flu and the So as many people are aware, there's other parts of the world that have flu season before us. We take the data from that and we make what we think is going to be the most accurate flu vaccine that we can make out of that data. So this year, they took, they have, the flu is two type A flu viruses, as well as two type B viruses. The flu vaccine reduces the risk of illness typically between 40 to 60% from year to year. You can hear that I said reduces. You can still get the flu. This year, it was offered the new high-dose flu vaccine. This was for 65 and older. This has a higher dose of antigen that is said to give a better immune response for people in that age group. Unfortunately, the clinic did not have that. The organization wasn't able to get a hold of it. I did do some research. Hannaford's and Taunton does have it. If anyone's interested, you can book online. Off to the side, you'll see, this is the mass.gov site, and this is where I looked to see in Massachusetts how we're doing with flu. I think it's important residents know where to look so they can see the severity, so that they can see it's low right now, their risk is low, they don't need to take any additional steps. That's, that can be accessed by everyone, and that's, it's updated weekly.
Oh, oh, Bob, would you be able to let Joe's iPhone in?
Oh, I can't see that.
Sorry.
Am I clicking this blue thing?
Yep, yep, that's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Look at this. Running it all. Okay. So right before the clinic, the new bivalent booster was released. It had taken over for the monovalent booster that was the previous one that was being administered. This was formulated for the original COVID strain, as well as the two Omicron subvariants, BA.4 and BA.5. BA.5 accounts for nearly 80% of the cases in the United States. Just like the flu shot, it does not prevent you from getting COVID. It hopefully lowers the symptoms. This booster can be received at least two months after your final primary series or your last monovariant booster. Like I said, that was the last booster that was available on the market. So this is another dashboard that's on mass.gov. It's very similar to the flu one. The only thing I look at personally on this one now is hospitalizations, because this is going to tell me the severity of whatever strain is going around. You'll see here that for this week of November 2nd, that's when I took it from, 179 patients were hospitalized due to COVID. You'll see I bolded that because "due" means that they had symptoms that were severe enough that they had to be hospitalized, in comparison with the 634 patients that were hospitalized with COVID. These are people that were hospitalized and they just happen to have COVID, or because they're still doing the PCR testing, they just had had COVID in the last three months and they're not actively having it. Do you have a question? You've got a question, face?
Actually, these numbers are Dyton residents?
No, this is Massachusetts. Yes.
Oh, okay.
Less scary then, right? When it's the whole state?
Yes.
Yeah. So of the 634 patients, 397, that's 63%, are reported to be fully vaccinated. So you'll notice that I am only supplying you with the number of vaccinated patients that were hospitalized with COVID. That's because the dashboard took away the part for the "due to COVID." They took it away a couple of months ago. They said that it was no longer relevant. I found it pretty relevant because I could see who was in the hospital because of COVID and their vaccination status, and that gave me some kind of idea of how effective the vaccine was. And now I don't have that data, and it kind of makes it a little difficult. So the next thing I look at is on that same dashboard. It's just a different tab up on the top, and this is hospitalizations by age. This also gives me a good idea of the severity of the strain that's going around. You can see here that 80 and up is right now the highest. If I was to come to this dashboard and maybe I saw 20 and 29 high, I would think that maybe the severity is a little bit higher, because generally that's not a population that is going to be hospitalized. So I just want folks to know about this, because it is very helpful to see what's going on in Massachusetts. So vaccine is just a small tool in our healthcare toolbox. Overall health is really the key. If you're building off a strong foundation, you're going to have a better outcome. So I really encourage people to work on their overall health all year long, getting plenty of rest, having good fluid intake, staying active, eating nutritious foods, and when you do these things all year long, you're going to have better outcomes when you become Lastly, I just want to thank a few people that helped with the immunization clinic. Mike Mullin, Town Administrator, he helped me partner with Manette. Todd Pelling, Health Agent, Rosalyn Gross, Office Manager, they fielded the calls for me. Tom Ferry, he came in the morning of and let me into primetime and made sure I had everything I needed. And Bella, Executive Director of Council on Aging, for letting us use the facility for the day. And that's all I got. Any questions?
No, I thought it was excellent. Out.
Just a comment. A new website went online on the 20th, so that might have been a reason why a lot of people weren't able to go online. I know I went online and I was able to. So I think next year, you're going to see more people.
Also, we only, on the boards, we only talk about how they can call, and I want to figure out a way to put that they can go online instead of really pushing the calling thing. I'm happy if people call, but I do think it would work out much better if they did it online.
I agree. And I think you're, this was successful for the town. It's great that members of the town were able to take advantage of this and...
Yeah, I really hope we can build off of this.
And I think you will see more...
To make something that all residents would be wanting to come to.
So thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mello, thank you. Thank you all for doing for the town. It's really good to have the opportunity to inform the public about what services your department can provide to the citizens. Many people don't know what this town has to offer in many areas. Is there anything that we can do to help promote with the communication?
In what regards?
In upcoming clinics, locations, advisory?
I'm hoping that once we, so the Board of Health has just started to work on their, their page on the new site, I'm hoping to have my own tab so that I can put more information in there. I've looked at other towns and their nurses having their own tabs, so we can get stuff on AAA. Lyme disease is a really big thing in Dyton, and I don't think people know that. So I would like to get all that information out to people.
Excellent. That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public input. And just before I open it up to citizens of Dyton, I would like to remind people that the chairman has the ability to limit public input based on inappropriate behavior. Any, if anything that an employee has that they wish to have addressed in public input, they should see Mr. Mullin and place it on the agenda, rather than getting into a department discussion in public input that will last longer than the five-minute time limit that we have. And also, we ask that comments that are disparaging of town employees not be made in public input. If you have concerns or complaints about a particular employee, that you bring them to Mr. Mullin's attention, and I'm sure he'd be glad to sit down and discuss it with you. With that being said, is there any public input?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Reynolds. I live at 725 Main Street. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Board of Selectmen, for the opportunity to address you this evening. I just wanted to share a few comments about a recent occurrence in town that I would like to highlight and draw a bit of attention to. Dyton is a wonderful town, where I feel uniquely blessed to be able to raise my three children. A safe, vibrant community with a big heart, a robust social dialogue, which balances great services with responsible leadership, all against the backdrop of an unmatched idyllic country charm. However, the price of that safety is constant vigilance by our public safety professionals, to whom our community owes its sincere gratitude. I'd like to draw some attention to something which occurred last week on the evening of November 4th. As recounted on the Dyton Police Department's Facebook page, this past Friday, Field Training Officer Barrows and Officer Almeida of the Dyton Police Department were involved in a motor vehicle stop, which was anything but ordinary. During this stop, FTO Barrows and Officer Almeida approached the driver's side window of a vehicle. Upon their approach, the driver of that vehicle began reaching toward a pistol. Officer Almeida immediately gave verbal commands for the driver to show their hands. The driver did not comply and continued reaching toward the weapon. These are the moments which try a person's soul. For the men and women in uniform who keep us and our families safe, getting them home safe to their own families is of the most critical importance. If you were in Officer Almeida's or Field Training Officer Barrows's shoes, what would you have done? A stop which could easily have ended in the loss of life, through the quick thinking, swift action, and courageous discretion of these two officers, instead ended without bloodshed. The driver of the vehicle was placed under arrest for operating under the influence, and an extremely convincing-looking airsoft-style pistol was recovered by these two officers. I wanted to highlight this occurrence and recognize these individuals, along with the rest of our public safety professionals, for the yoke of responsibility they shoulder day in and day out. The job is fraught with tough calls and split-second decisions, too many of which go unrecognized. Let that not be the case tonight. On behalf of the people of Dyton, your community owes you its thanks and appreciation. Thank you very much for everything you do, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're very fortunate to have a wonderful police department.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Mr. Pacheco, anything?
No.
Mr. Karen, anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have received many notifications about this incident, and I spoke to Mr. Mullin today in regards to Officer Barrows and Officer Almeida. And I believe it would be fitting to ask Mr. Mullin to draft a letter of commendation to be placed in the files, personal file, of Mr. Barrows and Mr. Almeida, for their courage and their commitment to public safety. I would entertain that in a form of a motion.
Make that motion.
Second that motion.
Motion made in second, that letters of commendation be placed in the files of Officer Barrows and Officer Almeida for their actions at this, involving this incident. With that being said, Mr. Karen? You made the motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Motion passes. So, Mr. Mullin, you...
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Ray Haye, Veterans Agent, in regards to Veterans Day activities and the Veterans Day proclamation.
Mr. Chairman, Selectmen, good evening. I'd like to start out by thanking the Council on Aging for a week's worth of activities for our veterans here in town. It's been successful. I don't know if it was ever done before, but we worked in conjunction with them, and the activities so far have been very nice, very nice. Also like to thank the students of the Dyton, I guess, is it Dyton Rehoboth School System? Or is it just Dyton?
Dyton Rehoboth.
Dyton Rehoboth, I wanted to get it right. For the cards and things that they put together that I will be giving out at the breakfast to veterans, which looks like it's going to be well-attended. So thank them for being interested. As veterans, we appreciate that. So thank you to them. Also, I'll give you a little background on what we're doing. We will be having a ceremony here on November 11th, which is Friday, at 11 o'clock, weather permitting at the park, the Veterans Park. If not, we'll be undercover in the pavilion here. But we will be doing it rain or shine. Also, we'll be having a breakfast at the church on Main Street, and we sent out invitations to 400 or so veterans here in town. We've got a good response. I can't say exactly how many, but it's going to be a nice, nice event. They've been stopping by the office, thanking us for considering them, and they remember the one we had was successful last year. Remember that, Mr. Chairman. We also, I would like to present you with this year's proclamation to be read into the record, Mr. Chairman, and also I'd request that we have it available for reading at the ceremony on Friday. So with that said... Any questions to me or also?
Actually, I would like to thank you for all of your efforts in putting this together, but especially for all of what you and Annabelle Powell have done with the Council on Aging, the activities that have been held and will continue through the week. It's a first.
A first. It's a good partnership, and it makes sense.
Excellent. And thank you for coming up with the idea and for both of you...
Well, I can't take credit for that. I have to pass that off to Annabelle and her staff, who kind of got in touch with me and put me in motion, so...
Open it our next meeting.
Glad we work close together, because it's not far for us to get together, so it's a good concept. I hope it continues.
Thank you. I hope the next meeting, we can have Annabella here to also thank her, because it was wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to read the proclamation. Whereas since the Dytons' colonial days, hundreds of men and women have served our country in defense of freedom and liberty. And whereas on November 11th, 1918, the Amistice was signed in the forest of Compaña by the Allied Nations and Germany, ending World War I and the war to end all wars after four years of conflict. And whereas since that day, every November, people from around the nation have gathered to honor our veterans. And whereas there are approximately 420 veterans living in the town of Dyton. And whereas today, we are reminded of the great sacrifices and contributions our veterans have made to our country. And whereas we honor and salute those who served our country throughout the generations with honor, patriotism, and courage. And whereas it is appropriate that all Massachusetts citizens remember the bravery of those who served their country, so that their dedication and sacrifices serve as a reminder of the cost of our freedom. And whereas in November 2022, the world will commemorate the 104th anniversary of the Amistice that ended the fighting in World War I at 11:00 AM, November 11th, 1918, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2022, to be Veterans Day. Signed, Leonard E. Hall Jr., Chairman, Peter D. Karen, Clerk, and a J. Pacheco, Member. Thank you. Our announcements.
Yes. Please note that the town-wide parking ban is in effect from November 1st, 2022, through April 1st, 2023. No vehicles shall be allowed to remain on the streets so as to obstruct snow removal. Dyton Police Department will take notice. Council on Aging and Veteran Services have teamed up for Veterans Week. As was mentioned earlier, there's been some events at the primetime Council on Aging. Some of those events have already occurred. I believe Veteran Haye was at Lincoln Village today.
Lincoln Village.
Yes.
Sing along yesterday.
Sing along yesterday.
And then they did something Monday. I think they made some of the things.
They made some crafts for veterans.
Tomorrow, the happy breakfast.
So, what's coming up now is Thursday tomorrow, November 10th, at 8:30 a.m. The Veterans Breakfast opens to all with the Dayton Council on Aging primetime Veteran Service Officer Raymond Hague at 10:59 Somerset Avenue. There will be a flag lowering ceremony to follow. Must RSVP by calling 508-823-0095. And as was mentioned earlier, Friday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m., Veterans Day Ceremony to honor all of who have served our country, hosted by the Veteran Service Department of Veterans Memorial Park, 979 Somerset Avenue. Saturday, November 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., the Veteran Service Department is hosting the Veterans Breakfast for Veterans, located at the Father's House Family Church, located at 207 Main Street, Dayton, which is going to be our new town library. The Town of Dayton's Food Bank Distribution will be held next on November 19th, 2022, located at the Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue, Lower Level. And the Dayton Holiday Committee announces Dayton Lights on 2022 to be held on Saturday, November 26th, 2022, at Dayton Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue. Stop by to meet Santa. The family fun event will begin at 3:30 p.m. And there's numerous events, I believe it's on our Facebook page, different events that'll be going on, 3:30 to 4:00 Storytime with Mrs. Claus, 4:10 to 4:30 Dayton Rehoboth High School Pro Musica, 4:30 to 4:50 Dayton Elementary School Chorus, Carolin by Dignitaries, 4:50 to 5:10, 5:15 to 5:30's Parade, and at 5:30, there will be lights on, and a 5:30 DR marching band performance. Stick around for hayrides around the track, and there'll be a welcome by Senator Mark Pacheco, Representative Patricia Hadad, District Attorney Tom Quinn, and Dayton Town officials. And there will be hot cocoa, coffee, hot dogs, popcorn, and cake available. Thanks to all, the following for donations and help, Rougeau's Farm, Dayton Lions, Dayton Police, Fire, and Highway. That's it for announcements.
Thank you very much. Town Administrators, report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alec, I'm very, I'm very happy to report that we, that last Tuesday evening, we had a very successful special town meeting. We had 104 residents attend. So, that was a pretty good turnout. Now, with special town meeting concluded, all of our financial departments, they're preparing for the tax recap, which will take us in to the, to the planned tax classification hearing by the board, by this board on Wednesday, November 30th. That hearing will be duly and properly advertised in the Gazette next week. But I just wanted to let everyone know that we are planning the tax classification hearing for Wednesday, November 30th, at 6:00 p.m. here at Old Town Hall. I also want to just take a moment to thank the Town Clerk's Office, all of our poll and election workers, and everyone involved in making, yes, today's administration of the state election a success. I visited the election yesterday afternoon, and I really want to commend Town Clerk Mark Pacheco, Assistant Town Clerk PM Tingleman, and all of our election and poll workers for their, for the diligence, the responsibility. You know, that day, Turk voting is, you know, a very, very, very sacred right here in our country. And, you know, we take that seriously, and everyone, you know, like who was administering and had a part, I can administering the election here in Dayton yesterday, did a very, very, very job well done. So, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank them. That's all I have in my report tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. All business. One of the things that the committee that was put together to review the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional Agreement, notice that there were several, at least two committees, three committees, that needed to be formed, that had not been formed over the last several years. So, with that being said, Mr. Mullen, we have the formation of two community representative, actually, there'd be six members, two committees regarding the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional Elementary Advisory Committee. And, Mr. Mullen, if you'd like to speak more on...
Yeah, so the flyer, the flyer that Alec is in the pocket and that we, that we are presenting this evening, would inquire, I'm going to encourage, I encourage Dayton residents who want to give back by volunteering, that are interested in having a voice in matters affecting our K-38 students, you know, to consider joining either the Dayton Elementary School or the Dayton Middle School Advisor, the Dayton Elementary School, the Dayton Middle School Advisory Committees. The DI Regional Agreement does require advisory committees to make recommendations to the school committee and the school superintendent on matters affecting Dayton students. And, oh, you know, and it's very important to the Town of Dayton, to the Town of Rehoboth, and also to the school district that we're adhering to the provisions of the regional agreement. That's why we're asking and encouraging anyone who has an interest, any resident of Dayton, who has an interest in our, like, in our K-8 education, to consider applying for either the Dayton Elementary School Advisory Committee or the Dayton Middle School Advisory Committee. We are actually, as some, we're soliciting applications from now to Friday, November 25th, 2022. And it's very easy. We do have an employment and volunteer tab on our new website that is extremely ease, that's extremely easy to navigate. You know, and all, and all residents need to do, they can simply log on to the website through the link below as well. We'll get this out there on social media and email as well. And there is a volunteer application form on our website. So, again, as you mentioned, we are, we are hoping that at least six people apply. So, we will have, have the ability at the Board's November 30th meeting to consider those appointments. So, we're very excited about that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
Thank you. The regional, DI Regional Agreement Task Force has three goals. One, to clarify specific points of the regional agreement that have been questioned since the beginning of the regional agreement. Secondly, to work closer together to build better relations between the two towns. And it's worked out great that we've been able to expand it to be on just about schools. These meetings have generated discussions with other departments. And Mrs. Gulat and I attended a Board of Selectmen meeting where we were able to work on closer partnerships between the two Boards of Selectmen. We already have a wonderful relationship between the Animal Control Officer of Rehoboth, Rob Johnson, and Stacy Ferry, that's been going on for a number of years and continues to be strong. We also have developed a closer working relationship between Chief Trembetta of the Rehoboth Police Department and Chief Cronin. And those are things that have kind of become an offshoot of these discussions. The committee currently has myself and the Chairman of the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen, the Chair and Vice Chair of the School Committee, Mr. Mullen, and Mr. Dagan, a member of the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen Axe, is the representative of the Rehoboth Finances, and Mr. Baxter, the School Department Business Agent and Superintendent Rooney. And one of the things that we noticed is that, under the regional agreement, there was the formation of the Dayton-Rehoboth Regional Finance Committee. And the original member was Nancy Gulat. And I believe a motion is necessary to reappoint Mrs. Gulat for fiscal?
No, thankfully, Mrs. Gulat has already been appointed for fiscal year 2023. So, she's a member in good standing, thankfully, and...
I'm a member.
Yes. And, but also, and, but also, as part of the advisory finance committee as well, are two members from each community's FinCom also, like, are called to join as well. So, we'll be reaching out to the FinCom and asking them to designate their members as well.
And Mrs. Gulat, as soon as we're able to get the two members from FinCom, I'm sure they'll be having meetings. Things are going wonderfully well between the two towns right now. And it's a great group of people over there. Was there any further questions? Next is Selectmen's report. Mr. Karen or Mr. Pacheco, do you have?
I have no reports.
No, I don't have any today.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I don't have one today.
Well, Monday night, the Dayton Industrial Development Commission met along with Serpent with a forum to discuss their ongoing survey. And although the survey is still looking for input, it will be posted. Mr. Mullen, where are we going to post the results of that?
We do have boards from the, like, from the forum on Monday night that we're going to actually be putting in the, in the Town Hall hallways. So, residents who were not able to attend Monday night can have the ability to, to visit us at Town Hall, and to weigh in on the questions that were asked in, in the meeting on Monday night through the boards. So, we do want the boards to continue to be interactive and really solicit feedback, like, input, you know, over the, over the next few weeks. The survey itself, we have, we have 121 respondents to the survey so far. The survey launched in mid-August. So, we've received really great participation, but we want even more. We want to make sure, you know, that our visioning and that the plan for economic development really reflects, like, what the residents of Dayton want. And we need to hear, like, input and feedback to help really shape that. So, the, 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 the present feedback to those surveys, they, that is also outlined on the boards I just mentioned, so they'll be put up at Town Hall, probably by early next week. And the feedback that we have received through the survey to date, you know, I think is very instructive, like, in terms of shaping where, really where our residents want our community to go, that they want to protect open space, you know, that we take a lot of pride in being, like, an agriculturally-based community. You know, like, in making sure we, we keep that and balance that is, like, is a significant priority for our residents as well. So, again, through the town website, residents have, have the opportunity to weigh into the survey, but also, like, visiting Town Hall, they can weigh in on the boards, like, in Serpent. On Monday evening as well, we were even talking about doing, doing, like, a Zoom forum as well, sometime in the next month or so. So, we're really maximizing, like, all the opportunities we have to, you know, to really solicit our residents' feedback through this process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Two of the areas which have come out, drawn notice with the DDIC, one, taking a look at the zoning in this town in regards to possible industrial development. We're very, very limited. And the DDIC in the future, unless things change drastically in the surveys, which I don't think they will, the number-one concern of residents in the town was zoning and how it limits industrial growth. And I know in talking with the members, other members of the DDIC, they're hoping that members of the Planning Board and ZBA would be willing to meet with them to look at potential ways that we might be able to maybe work at some zoning proposal, change proposals that need to be voted by the residents to see if we could do something to improve or bring in more industry into Dayton. One of the concerns is that there are several tracts of industrial land that are either surrounded by wetlands, which make it very next to impossible to build, or are landlocked, which makes it very difficult to access. So, they'd like to talk and see if there's any possibility of, one, working together to create some recommended changes. And secondly, if we can reach out to those businesses that might potentially fit well into the industrial areas based on, you know, road access or environmental impact. The second issue is one that we've talked about quite a bit, but it's also a very expensive one. Also high on the priority list of resident response was the potential for sewer expansion. That's something that we've had residents from Route 44 as well as Route 138 have expressed a desire to see some expansion. And again, the DDIC would like to, at some point, meet with sewer to discuss if, if that is possible, if that's something we should pursue. And I understand it's very, very expensive proposition, but it's something that the residents of the survey have expressed an interest in seeing us take a look at. Regarding the Water District, the biggest thing on, two big things on the Water District agenda. One, as we're well aware, on November 7th, they started the Main Street project. And it's already caused some disruption. The road will, for the most part, the upper end, right now, they'll be working towards the river, and it will change the disruption, has been closed. So, residents, you will get, if you're coming up from the riverside of Main Street, you will get to Milk Street and have to take a right. And if you're trying to get to Williams Street, you will have to go all the way around to get to Center. So, this morning was pretty interesting. So, please give yourself more time if you need to get to work, because it will be closed. There are police officers there. Are there any, if any residents are having any difficulties getting out of their yard in the morning, please let us know. That will change as they move further down. You know, timing could be an issue about trying to get out of your driveway when they're working. So, if it is a problem, please let us know. So, um, if it is a problem, please let us know so we can talk to the, um, engineers or workmen on the project. The second point is rather unfortunate. Jeff Clunin, as of November eighteenth, will be leaving as the superintendent of the Dyton Water District. And he has taken a position in Easton. And the Water District, it has posted that position. And hopefully, within a month, they will have a candidate to announce. Mr. Clunin is a Dyton resident, and he has served this town well, and we wish him the best in his future endeavors. In regards to Dyton Rehoboth, as we've heard earlier, Mr. Mullen has mentioned, there is going to be, and I had received some communication from one of the DR school committee members, something that he would like to see happen, is the town of Dyton reach out to the Dyton Rehoboth School Department to see if their students can be more involved in helping the town. Whether it be their carpentry program, doing small projects, building sheds. Basically, we have turned to BP quite a bit, but they're asking if we would remember them too and try to get them involved in some building projects. Another area that we're working on, Mr. Marvell, through the superintendent, is to encourage more of the DR students to take an interest in media production. And hopefully, if nothing more, they can come down and gain some additional training and maybe be some help, um, with covering your events. So, um, those were the two areas that were mentioned, but Mr. Rooney has reached out to us and, school committee member Peter Latour did the same to me this week. So there's, uh, DR wants to become more involved in the community, more than just what goes on in the classroom. Thank you. With that, new business is next on the agenda. We have an update on the payment designation form. Mr. Mullen?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board again. Um, uh, you have, um, uh, one of the things with the new town accountant, we, um, uh, we want to get back, he wants to get back, um, uh, to having, uh, to having payment designation forms annually designated by department, um, and department heads. Uh, like, uh, so like, and, uh, uh, in terms of which, in terms of which employees, which board members of, uh, like of, uh, like of each respective department um, have, um, have the abilities to sign, uh, like for a payment, approved payrolls and other invoices. Uh, like, and, um, uh, like in under the, uh, like, and, um, and under the jurisdiction of the Selectmen, uh, and myself, a town administrator, uh, like we are responsible for the budgets, um, in one twenty-two, which is at the, uh, which is the Selectmen's budget, one twenty-four, which, uh, Department one twenty-four, which is a town administrator's budget. Um, and also, uh, one ninety-two, uh, which is, uh, the public buildings budget. So, uh, like what I in the town accountant, uh, like, um, uh, like I'm ask, um, like asking this evening is, uh, the board to, uh, the board to consider designated members of the board, uh, like who are, uh, like who are able, who are able to regularly sign, uh, for payrolls and weekly invoices. Uh, this is actually like separate from the overall warrant itself. Uh, uh, these are for the department specific, uh, uh, payrolls, invoices and bills. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen?
I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to designate Board of Selectmen Chairman Leonard Hall or Selectmen Ken Pacheco or Selectmen Peter Karen and/or Town Administrator Mike Mullen as designated persons to sign payrolls and/or bills for the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator and Public Buildings Departments as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you. Next on the agenda, the Board of Salt Bid to Easton Minerals.
Uh, yes, uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really wanna, I really wanna thank Highway Superintendent Ferry, uh, like for his work in this matter, uh, every year, uh, you know, for, uh, probably as many years and probably beyond that Ms., uh, that Mr. Ferry, um, has been the year superintendent. Um, he, um, he is part of a group purchasing, um, he's part of a, a group purchasing program for salt, uh, for winter salt that's led actually by the town of Medfield. Uh, they go out with, uh, with probably up to about twenty communities. They go, uh, like we actually, they go out to bid for us and with us. Uh, like, and they, um, and they actually solicit, um, bulk prices for, uh, like for rock salt, for solar salt and treated salt. Um, uh, um, in the town of Medfield, they reached out, uh, they contacted us earlier in the fall. Uh, they asked us once again if we wanted to participate, and we, uh, like, and we responded overwhelmingly, yes. This, um, is how we do treat our roads in our highway department. Um, uh, they treat our roads and winter weather each year. Uh, so like, uh, uh, at this point, I am recommending, uh, that the, um, that the board vote to join uh, the Midway two twenty, two thousand twenty-two, two, uh, twenty twenty-three salt bid, uh, with the primary bidder being, uh, being Eastern Materials Incorporated. Uh, like, um, and the secondary bidder being Morton Salt Company.
I, I, are there any questions? You know, one of the things, and I believe it's Easton Minerals. I've heard this, I actually, I asked Mr. Ferry one time, what is his secret to success? Because our highway department does an outstanding job on the roads. And he said to me molasses. I said, molasses? He mixes, or molasses is mixed into the salt. I mentioned that to the members of the Rehoboth Board of Selectmen one time, and they laughed, but it's true. Apparently, this kind of tells Mr. Ferry's secret. Apparently, Eastern Minerals mixes molasses in with the salt, and it's less expensive and it creates almost like a seal, if you will, so the water can't get through, um, and refreeze after the salt has broken down, um, ice. And to me, that was pretty incredible that, you know, we use something, I guess there's a lot of it, molasses, to make, uh, our roads safer and certainly nice, very nice. I, I don't wanna say better than our neighbors, but certainly proud of the job that the highway department here in Dyton does. Uh, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to join the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Town of Medfield Salt Bid with Eastern Minerals Incorporated and Morton Salt Company as the respective primary and secondary award bidders.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Next on the agenda, proposed establishment of a fire station building committee.
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, um, uh, we received, um, on November, uh, November seventh, a memo, um, uh, the board did from, um, from the chief of the fire department. Uh, um, and the memo reads, "Dear Board, with the recent approval of the fire station feasibility study at the special term meeting, I am running to request that your board, uh, that your board consider forming a fire station building committee." I, I envision as the chief, uh, uh, but the committee consisting of one fire department declare member, one fire department full-time member, the fire chief, one member, one member of the Selectmen, uh, one member of the financial team, uh, the, uh, the billing commissioner, facilities manager, uh, and two members, and two members from the community. Uh, uh, it's my opinion that this be done before we go out to bid for the feasibility study so the committee can review bid specs before it is put out, uh, and then review and approve the bids when they come back in to make a decision on bid award. I, I find this to be an important step so the process is transparent and has the involvement of many, not just my department. Uh, if either of you have any questions, please let me know, and that's from the fire chief.
Any questions?
Oh, I think it's a great idea.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that being said, I want to entertain a motion to approve the establishment of a fire station building committee as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. The Solid Waste Committee put together a list of proposed increases. They have spent a great deal of time working through this list. And, um, this evening, I'm not looking for a vote. I'd like this to be the first reading. And the reason being, when there were fee increases, I believe nearly two years ago, there was some pushback because the community felt that they weren't aware of what was going on. And all of a sudden, they got these fee increases. So as we do with many of our policies, we have, before they're presented, we have three readings. And I was hoping that both of my colleagues would be okay in presenting it so that we may get public feedback on these proposed rates to inform the public what may come. And obviously, their input will help influence our decision on these rates. And I'm hoping this evening there'll be some discussion as part of the process to educate the public of why these fee increases are needed. I don't know if it would be appropriate to read this into the record so that the public would be able to have an idea of what is proposed. The proposed changes are not, at this point, substantial. The only area that they couldn't agree on, and there'll be more discussion and more discussion at this level, but also with solid waste, is if there should be a sticker fee increase.
It's not that we couldn't agree. It wasn't discussed.
Wasn't discussed at all?
Right. Talked about briefly, but not brought up enough to discuss it.
Do you think that it would be something that can be done in coordination with our vote with this, since it has to be?
Is this the second reading for this, or was last?
Technically, it would be the second.
Right.
Cause we had one.
Mike, when do we meet again?
Um, the next Solid Waste Committee meeting is the twenty-eighth of November.
Right, so it wouldn't coincide with this.
It wouldn't?
No.
So, uh, but, uh, we don't, and I mean, I think, so like, I think to the, so I think to the boards, uh, to the boards, um, credit, we, um, and the board, like, is really trying to get this information out there as well. Uh, so like if we, so this is just my opinion, but if we, uh, were to continue on in the reading, uh, like in the reading process and then, uh, like through the meeting, um, on the twenty-eighth and any recommendations that may be made, uh, on the twenty-eighth, then actually contemplate, we're meeting next, um, on November thirtieth. So we might have an adjustment perhaps we like to add in. Oh, get to, uh, uh, to these fee increases at that point. Uh, like, and we could incorporate that if there is any, uh, like updated recommendations to the process. So that's also an option as well.
I was wondering, would it be okay to place this proposed fee increase on our webpage? So
Absolutely.
public could take a look at it and give their input. Cause the idea is to inform the public before we make any changes. Mr. Galucci?
Number one, there's no D in refrigerator. Somebody should be flogged. But that's the idea of it. Secondly, have we taken into account the, uh, do you have a plan moving forward for all mattresses that are gonna be on the side of the road?
So.
That is.
I can't speak into the podium, sir. Yeah. I'll repeat that to our public input because you can't hear that.
Okay, no, thank you.
I can hear you, sir.
I can hear him, but.
We can barely hear you too, sir.
All right, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Tom Galucci, twenty eighty-six Palmer Street. Um, my question is, um, well firstly, my comment was, there's no D in refrigerator. So that needs to be.
Thank you. Fixed.
Um, it just drives me nuts. Uh, secondly, um, have we taken into account what's gonna happen with all the mattresses that are gonna wind up on the side of the deserted roads in our humble little town with a big heart? Um, do we have a plan for that moving forward?
Mr. Pacheco has mentioned that in earlier meetings, and that is something, that's why we're doing three readings.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Pacheco.
If you don't mind, my, my concern was that when we talked about this, we were talking about a ninety-dollar fee.
Right, right.
That's a big increase, obviously. I'm okay with the forty-dollar, given that we did some cost accounting on this and we figured out this is what it's gonna cost the town per mattress.
Yep.
I understand. There's been a mattress on Brook Street for about a month now on the side of the road.
Right.
So there are gonna be some, unfortunately, some, some mattress. But my main concern was that when we're talking about ninety dollars way back when.
You're, you're absolutely right that, uh, you know, may, maybe to, to bring it down to the forty-dollar fee was probably a better idea because you'd have more non-compliance with a ninety-dollar fee, absolutely. All right, that's all I had. Thank you.
It's still substantially cheaper than our, our surrounding communities. Rehoboth is well over a hundred dollars, and they don't see a, a large increase of mattresses on the side of the roads. So although I expect an increase, I don't think it's going to be that large. And we did have a ninety-dollar fee that was thrown around because at the time, the cost was skyrocketing. But we managed to shop around and get it, uh, much more.
Rehoboth being a little more rural than Dyton, you'll probably see a lot more people burning things in Rehoboth where you wouldn't see that here. But that, that really does happen. I mean,
Right.
I might know about some of that. I might have been to a, to a person's backyard where they were burning a mattress or whatever. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you guys.
No, thank you, and that's the idea of doing the reading so we can get public input before we make a final decision. Um, with that being said, I'd like to, um, read for the, into the record, uh, the Solid Waste Committee posed increases. Box springs, twin, double, queen, king, uh, increased from fifteen dollars to forty dollars. Mattresses, the same. Uh, mattresses, the same, $15 to $40. Crib mattresses would be $20. Ottoman, a new fee of $10. Sectional couches from $20 increased to $40. Sofas or couches increased from 15 to 20 dollars. Television consoles from 20 to 40 dollars. Toilets or sinks, a new fee of $10. Car tires from 5 to 10 dollars. Truck tires, 10 to 15 dollars. Tractor tires, 15 to 20 dollars. Also, trailer fees will change for a single axle to $50. And double axle, 16 feet maximum, $100. Now bulky items, including rigid plastic items. A half pickup truck load increased from 10 to 25 dollars. A full pickup truck load from 20 to 50 dollars. And a, uh, for construction debris, uh, a full pickup truck load would increase from 75 dollars to 100 dollars. Are there any questions about that? Mr. Karen, would you like to elaborate?
These fees would not just pick out of thin air. Uh, it's been well over 10 years since our fees went up for a lot of these items, but the cost has been skyrocketing.
Yes.
So we had to look at how much room these items take up, what's the weight of these items, uh, to determine what the cost would be. So they just weren't picked up that, uh, a truck tire sounds good at $10, it, there was a reason for these cost increases. And we're going to get rid of trailer fees, um, i- and just go to, changing it to a single axle and double axle as opposed to the, before it was eight feet or less or nine feet or more.
Oh, thank you. And one other thing that the public needs to be aware. Early on in these discussions, Mrs. Katavia called me to say that she had just been overwhelmed with 22 pages of mandates from the state and how now things had to be separated more. And that certain items, um, were going to be difficult or very expensive to find a recycle company to take. And the amount of mandates means more manpower to make sure things are separated or separated in specific bins. And also to make sure people don't try to circumvent the rules. So when you add all these additional mandates, the need for additional staffing, running a transfer station is getting to be more and more expensive. And with that in mind, the goal, hopefully someday, to create a program that is self-sufficient. It won't not only be, um, an increase in fees, but also it won't impact the taxpayers as a whole. Are there any further questions?
I do have a question. On the change to miscellaneous items not listed, uh, half pickup truck 20, from 10 to 25 and a full pickup truck 20 to 50. It says fee to be determined at the tenant's discretion. What, what does it meant by that?
Mr. Karen?
Uh, the, one of the things that we talked about was people who build sides on the back of the pickup trucks to give them greater height. So the, what was considered a full load compared to what a half load would be.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions in regards to that? Mr. Karen, you don't anticipate any changes to these proposed numbers, do you?
No, not at this time.
Do you anticipate any additional ones that haven't been proposed?
I, if.
Other than the, the
If, we, we.
Steals.
Right, if, well, the stickers
Stickers.
would be the only other item that I would think of, that could think of at this time, that would change.
Okay. No, that's cool.
There was some discussion at the solid waste committee about leave, leaves and brush.
Right.
Right now, it's, you have to have a sticker.
Right.
Or you don't have to pay for that, and they say talk.
Um, just like the, the textiles, the same thing, whether or not, if we, if somebody was coming in to donate their clothing, whether or not they would need a sticker for that. It, it's, hasn't been discussed enough yet.
Mr. Mavva?
Yes, quick question. We talked about the stickers. Are you talking about going up on those prices too?
Uh, I.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can you make sure other people speak from the podium?
Certainly.
I try to watch this at home, and you can't hear anybody from the audience.
My.
So there are people listening, and I think they would like to hear what Mr. Mavva has to say.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dave Mavva, 102 Forest Street, back to our protocols here. So anyhow, uh, the sticker price, would that go up too?
It's been discussed, but not fully, so I, I, I can't say for the board whether or not they would approve a, an increase at this time. Uh, it, it's been discussed that the price probably will go up or should go up, but I, I, to say that it's going to would be wrong of me at this time.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have had some, we had an individual come to the Board of Health and also to the Town Administrator's Office with concerns about leave and, and, and brush pickup. And I believe, is he going to be attending the next solid waste meeting?
Uh, yeah, we're going to invite the gentleman to the next solid waste meeting.
Okay. And, you know, I'm hoping that his concerns can be addressed at that meeting. But please extend an invitation to the Board of Selectmen meeting if he feels that that's necessary as well.
I just want to clarify one thing. Is this the first reading or the second reading? Last week when we talked about it and discussed it, was that?
That was technically the first meeting.
Okay, so this is the second.
This is technically the second.
Um, well, my apologies, I listed that wrong on the agenda.
But even though, you know, we've had first reading, second reading, it's very important that we get this right.
Yep.
You know, especially where we have the sticker price issue still out there. I know Mr. Pillain and the Board of Health has, have expressed a, a deadline, a date that they'd like to get this implemented. But it's also important that we have consensus, not only solid waste and the Board of Health, but also the members of the Board of Select who ultimately will set the final price.
Yep.
So, I mean, we, we do have a target date, but again,
Well, I think
let's get this right.
November 1st brought in a lot of, um, restrictions, changes. So we were kind of under the gun to get things done by November 1st.
Okay.
And obviously, we still need the three weeks' worth of readings to, to cover the cost of the increases.
Now, when you say those mandates, is that from the state?
From the state.
And are there penalties if?
There will be. Uh, I don't know if they're imposed yet or, uh, what they will be, but there's going to be penalties for not complying, everything from recycling to textiles.
Okay. Could we find out when those drop dead deadlines?
Absolutely.
Because that would change.
Yeah.
Obviously, we don't want to incur any fines from the state.
Right.
I think that's, no, thank you for mentioning. I didn't realize there were, the state had some drop dead deadlines.
I'll have them for the next meeting.
Okay.
The 30th.
I know Mr. Pillain had expressed a desire to have in place before the start of the new year.
Right.
And that just seemed logical, but
I, I can say.
He didn't say anything about demanding.
They stopped selling a lot of stickers around Thanksgiving, so they really want to have the price established if there was going to be an increase for, around Thanksgiving.
Right.
Uh, so that it would go into effect January 1st.
Okay. No further questions? Thank you. Next on the agenda, review, discuss and act 200,000 library billing grant agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Mr. Mullin?
Uh, yes, one of the things that we were very, um, excited about, thankful for, um, is in the fiscal year 2023, um, a state budget process, um, Senator Mike Pacheco and Rep. Hadad, uh, they were able to, um, to secure um, a $200,000 earmark for the Dayton, um, our, for our Dayton Library project, uh, like at 207 Main Street. And, uh, like, in last week, we received, uh, the, uh, the contract from the state, uh, in order, uh, the, um, uh, the, uh, uh, the state in order to begin implementing the earmark. And, uh, what I would rec, uh, what I would recommend if possible is, uh, like, is that the board, uh, like, authori, uh, authorize me as Town Administrator to, um, to execute the contract on behalf of the town and the Board of Selectmen.
Are there any further questions?
No.
With that being said, I want to entertain a motion to authorize, uh, the Town Administrator, Mike Mullin, to sign the contract on behalf of the town of Dayton with the Commonwealth. This is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda is to appoint Andrew LaPointe to the Cable Commission. The Cable Committee would like to request that the Board of Selectmen appoint Andrew LaPointe to the Cable Commission for a five-year term as we do not have a quorum to make an official recommendation. We also respectfully request that he start at $20 an hour as he has seven years prior experience with the committee and has only been away from the committee for four months. Thank you for your consideration of this request, the members of the Dayton TV9 Committee. Um, are there any questions?
No, I just curious as to why he came back.
Andrew?
We're just going to watch you go to the.
Please come up.
Gentlemen? So your question was, um, why I came back?
Yeah, did you miss us, or?
Meeting wise, I like, I like the speed of this one, this one, this one's pretty good.
Thank you.
We're almost done with the agenda. If it's, if this is my welcome back present, I appreciate it, Lenny. Um, no, I've decided in the past couple of months to make a couple of changes with my employment. I'm leaving the retail job that I was at for four years and decided with the rush of meetings and seeing that Dave and Laura were still overworked, with me leaving, I decided to see if they would need further assistance while I'm kind of looking for other opportunities in my life. And they said yes, and I'm back.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
And I'm glad you're back. You know, I, I see the work that Dave and Laura do, and they've been unsung heroes. And it's been very stressful sometimes, especially when we have two meetings going on at the same time. I saw what David did for the Dayton, not Dayton Playground dedication on a Sunday to come and cover that meeting. The work that that committee does is certainly something that helps this town tremendously. I, I, I question what kind of trouble we would get ourselves in if we didn't have anyone to cover our meetings, whether it be informing the public, which would result in many more phone calls to the office trying to find out information. You know, just getting information out there is huge, and we couldn't do it without you. The second is to promote what we do here. You know, government around this country gets much maligned. And, and, and I'm hoping these meetings are putting a good spin on government so the people are satisfied with the representation that they're getting. And you help us by covering these meetings and seeing what we do here. Hearing all the wonderful things that, like those two officers or Annabelle Powell and Ray Hague do on a regular basis to help this community, so. Welcome, what? I'm sure it'll pass, but.
They'll be premature.
Um, with that being said, I will entertain a motion to appoint Andrew LaPointe to the Cable Committee.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Uh, next on the agenda is a recommendation to appoint Carly Stonestrom to the Dayton Cultural Council. The Dayton Cultural, Cu- Dayton Cultural Council met on September 26th, 2022, and would like to recommend Carly Stonestrom to the Board of Selectmen for appointment to the Dayton Cultural Council. Um, thank you for your time and consideration. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion to appoint Carly Stonestrom to the Dayton Cultural Council.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Carol Stonestrom to the Dayton Cultural Council.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next on the agenda, review and discuss an act recommendation for the appointment of the third member of the Board of Health. We had a vacancy, it was posted. There have been interviews held. There was a selection panel with the representative, uh, from the Board of Selectmen, uh, Town Administrator Mullin. And, uh, Mrs. Katavia is chairman of the Board of Health. They did an interview and they recommended, uh, Paul Pacheco. Uh, that recommendation was sent on to the Board of Health. Currently, there are two members of the Board of Health. And they voted two, nothing, to appoint or recommend to the Board of Selectmen the appointment of Patrick McGovern. The final approval of this position rests in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, we have two, um, recommendations, and this evening we will need to vote on those or on that. Is there any discussion?
I'm a little confused, um, or a lot confused, I don't know. The vote to recommend Mr. Paul Pacheco was unanimous at the meeting that we had, uh, for, for different reasons. Uh, mainly being that we were interested in hitting the ground running as opposed to waiting a substantial amount of time for another member to bring himself up to speed. And I don't know what changed. The, obviously, the Board of Health has the right to make their recommendation, but I don't know how it went from, um, one recommendation to it being a sec, a different recommendation. And I guess I'll ask you of, of the, right?
Come to the podium.
Um, and I'm only going to speak on what she had said at our meeting. When we met, she said that she had thought about it that night, that she had looked through when she got home. Actually, she said it was at 1:00 in the morning, but at some point, she looked through the two, um, to the, through all the paperwork for both of the gentlemen, and she had, at the end, came to a different conclusion. That's all I can say because that's what she said at the meeting, and I don't want to put any further words in her mouth. Does that help?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike, do you want to speak on the letter that you wrote?
Yeah, and I just also want to, like, mention that we do have both our candidates, I, I actually, like, here with this, Miss, um, Patrick McGovern and Paul Pacheco as well, like, both have been interested. Uh, but the memo I wrote that, that really explains the process, uh, that we went through, uh, reads, as you know, the Selectmen established, the Board of Health Member Selection Panel comprised of Selectmen like Karen. It designated. the Selectmen like Karen, a designated Board of Health and myself to screen and interview the candidates for the open Board of Health member position. The panel, the panel met first on October 24, 2022, to interview the five candidates for the position. Of the five very qualified applicants, the panel narrowed their consideration for recommendation to two candidates, Patrick McGovern and Paul Pacico. Upon review of references, the panel met a second time on November, on November 2, 2022, to finalize their recommendation to the Boards of Health and Selectmen. Both Mr. McGovern and Mr. Pacico come highly recommended. Each, each with a unique skill sets and expertise that would be beneficial to the Board of Health. Mr. McGovern would bring significant experience as a first responder and healthcare professional to the Board. Mr. Pacico would bring significant experience and knowledge of Dyton's town government from his years of servants, from his years of service on the Finkham, and as a Dyton Water, and as a Dyton Water District Commissioner to the Board. After due consideration, discussion, the panel again comprised of myself, the Selectmen, the Selectmen Karen, and Board of Health Chair Barbara Katavia voted to recommend the appointment of Mr. Paul Pacico as a member of the Board of Health. The panel agreed that Mr. Pacico's experience in multiple areas of town government would be most beneficial and allow him to hit the ground running as a Board of Health member.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen. Is there any further?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank both of you for applying for this position. It's always nice to have residents in town be interested in participating in town government. I would, and you both have excellent resumes, I would ask the question to both of you, do you have any experience in writing grants? Could you elaborate on that, please? Sure, I'm sure Woody wants you to come to this.
Hi, Pat McGovern, 1361 Main Street. Through my career as a firefighter and a first responder, I've been part of multiple grants for personnel, equipment for local towns that I worked for, as well as grants for the hospital that I worked for, for specific equipment, for money for services, for money for programs for the elderly in local towns as well. Officially, I've never 100% written a grant on my own, but I've been part of plenty committees that, that have submitted successful grants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Before I call for motion, one of the things that I know from people coming and going on the Board of Health is that each member of the Board of Health brings particular expertise to cover the areas that they deal with. And, and, and some of the major areas that are covered by the Board of Health are public health, Title V takes up a great deal of time, housing, and food inspections. And in the past, the Board of Health has found individuals that bring expertise in those We do, based on the current vacancy, have needs in the area of restaurant inspections. With the recent illness of Ms. Katavia, help with Title V. And a huge need in the area of building, an area that has not, in previous interviews, or people holding that position over the last two years, have the ability or bring that particular skill set to the table. And, and I think as we vote, we need to take that into consideration. What skill sets do the candidates bring to the table that will complement the people who are currently on the Board of Health? Is there any further?
You don't have, but you do have both resumes here in front of you.
Yes. I have had the opportunity to read them over.
I would make the motion that we appoint Paul Pacico to the Board of Health.
Do I have a second? Chairman Hull will step down to second that motion. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Can we discuss it, please?
Certainly.
I'm, I'm supporting Patrick McGovern for this, the Board of Health. I'm, I'm listening to the Board of Health members who are going to be working with the third member of the Board of Health, and I think it's important that they feel that the best person that they want for the Board, not that both couldn't do their job, don't get me wrong, but who they feel that they can work with is Patrick McGovern, so I'm supporting Patrick McGovern.
Thank you. Mr. Karen, any further questions?
No, nothing at this time.
I've had the opportunity, in the two previous interviews, that for positions on the Board of Health, that Mr. Pacico has attended, because this is the third time that he has applied. And he's shown by repeatedly applying that he really has a desire to serve on this committee. And I've heard Jimmy Agia, Building Superintendent, express his frustration of the number of times, and I have attended meetings, that he has had to come in and arbitrate disputes involving the Board of Health with residents of this community on issues of construction and building that have applied to the Board of Health. And in the area in particular, with septic, Title V issues, and septic design. And the biggest issue that that Board has struggled with, and we have spent incredible hours dealing with, is the issue of what is applicable in the, in regards to reconstruction or new construction. Those are issues that we needed to bring in, Mr. Agia, from the Building Department, to deal with, that could have probably been dealt with more quickly if the Board of Health had a member who could, with experience, and could clarify issues such as that, or construction issues. So with that in mind, we have a public health person on the Board of Health. I feel that area is strongly, quite strongly taken care of. But I do have a concern and a need for strengthening our work in the area of building, construction and building inspection. We had a situation with a fire that Mr. Agia was brought in that got a little dicey involving the Board of Health, because they didn't have someone with the expertise in the area of building constructions. So I, I see a real need for someone who has a background in buildings. With that being said, we have a motion on the floor, it has been seconded. All those in favor? Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Mr. Pacico?
No.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Mr. Pacico, you, congratulations. You must now see Mr. Mark Pacico, the clerk, to be sworn in. Okay? Thank you. Mr. McGovern, as I, I've mentioned earlier, Mr. Pacico has repeatedly shown an interest in serving on the Board. As time goes on, there'll be other openings. I would hope that you would consider again if something should open up to apply. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you both.
Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator Evaluation Process.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't think this is as riveting as anything else on the agenda tonight, but, but, I, I, as you know, I, I, as you know, my contract with the Board and with the town calls for an annual evaluation, I'm a, a performance review, which, you know, I think is really essential, like, as we've always had for the last year and a half, and as really I want to have with the Board and with the town, frankly, like, for years going forward, an honest assessment, regular feedback, and everything in between on a regular basis. It's the only way, you know, like, I'm able to have my pulse on the town, I, you know, the pulse on the Board, so I'm able to respond, oh, you know, to your needs, your priorities, and those of the town as well. So my first evaluation was, like, almost about a year ago now, with, like, after actually six months of employment, it feels like years now, although it's been a year and a half. And, and I just, with the, together with the Board, I just want to get in, you know, to a process where we do establish the process, I, 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 for my annual evaluation in the next, I, I, in the next two months or so. One of the things, and we do, I, we do have updated, we do have updated guidance from Labor Council about, you know, the evolution, like, in the state law, with regards to evaluation processes for town administrators. Like, and what, like, we have, what actually, what actually Town Council has, Labor Council has proposed, I, is an updated process to the town administrators' performance review process, like, where, I, 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 hopefully sometime in the next few weeks, we, like, we will, like, we, we will have a process that we could plan from, like, over, over the next month or so. And then one of other things that Labor Council, I, I, is proposing to be different this year, I, I, is that, like, individual evaluations don't become part of the public record, the public record, the evaluation that would become part of the public record would be, like, really an aggregate evaluation that was done, like, from the individual evaluations of each, each of the three Board members. And there's a case, like, I, 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 actually, that went to the Supreme Judicial Court, that actually, like, Labor Council was recommending as, oh, like, actually, like, as the way, oh, you know, oh, you know, as a deviation from where we've been that way. I, and one of the things also, just because of, oh, you know, the really, oh, you know, the roles and responsibilities of my job, I, you know, of the role of Town Administrator, Labor Council is also proposing, I, actually, like, an updated evaluation tool that is, that is actually much more specific and all encompassing, and I actually, and I actually think in many ways more rigorous, oh, you know, it's a more rigorous evaluation for the role, I, of Town Administrator as well, which, I mean, I want, oh, you know, I mean, I hold myself, I, as I think everyone knows, to extremely high standards, and, oh, you know, and I want to be held by them, I want, oh, you know, and if there is any feedback, I want, oh, you know, any feedback on the job I do, oh, you know, to be very thoughtful and constructive so that we, oh, yeah, like, I can improve, and we can all really do the job that everyone expects, so. So like, I just wanted to really, like, flow, oh, you know, like, introduce those, oh, you know, proposed updates, oh, you know, and begin a conversation with the Board now about, oh, you know, perhaps an updated process, we don't have to, like, actually have, we don't actually have to have any decision now, like, we, oh, you know, like, we do have, like, a little bit of time, but if, oh, you know, like, over the next, oh, year, two or three weeks, we could come back, oh, you know, like, and hopefully, at the meeting on the 30th, be able to solidify a process, oh, you know, like, oh, you know, either using an updated process, oh, you know, the process that we have used, like, or some type of hybrid, if, oh, yeah, like, if that is really the will of the Board, I'm all ears, but I just wanted to start the discussion now.
Are there any questions?
I don't have any.
Do we do three reviews?
Yeah.
And then come up with one, well, three mutual goal, three, yeah, mutual agreed-upon goals?
Yeah, I, yes, so there would be, like, individual reviews by each member of the Board.
Okay.
I, one, I, I, one of the things that's actually recommended is the three individual, those three individual, those three individual reviews are then actually, like, submitted to Labor Council to, like, actually aggregate, I mean, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, like, I honestly think we have the ability to do that in-house, when, oh, yeah, like, I honestly think we have the ability to do that in-house with Ms. Brady.
Sure.
Oh, you know, like, I think, oh, yeah, she is well capable, like, of doing that, oh, you know, like, actually, like, separate from any interaction with me, like, I won't have any role in that process, oh, you know, like, it, oh, you know, it's a way to keep that work in-house and not, oh, you don't have to frankly pay legal fees.
Right.
And then, oh, you know, once there is an aggregate, so, and then, once there is an aggregate evaluation, I, I can, from, I can, from each of the individual, from each of the individual goals that are identified, obviously, all of those would enter the equation, and then, I, like, we as a group would determine what, oh, you know, the goals actually of the next year out. And I think that's helpful, because, I mean, I want my goals, frankly, to be the same as the Board's goals as well.
Right.
Oh, you know, like, we're all, I mean, we're a team, and, I mean, I don't want to have my own goal that doesn't align, like, in any way, shape, or form with, with the Board or the community wants.
Okay.
Oh, you know, to move either, so. Like, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it does, thank you.
No further questions.
In 1996, I was a member of the School Committee. And our evaluation process focused heavily on goals and less on numbers of two, three, one, two, three, four, five. And the evaluation process, and I'm not sure if they still use the same one for the superintendent, was more collegial, of working together and establishing goals and having a meeting to do that, and making that part of the process. I know you have tremendous experience in the business world, and I'm sure you were correct, Mr. Karen, with various evaluation tools.
Sure.
And before we agree to this evaluation form, I would be, two things, curious to hear what you would recommend, based on your experience in the business world, but secondly, if we could plan, and I believe, are these meetings an executive session to create goals, or would they be?
Are those an open session?
Be an open session, that we set aside a time to Be an open session, that we set aside a time to have a meeting to create goals for the growth of the, of the town of Dayton and the growth of the town administrator as well. But to pick goals that we feel are really important for the community. I'm not saying we have to throw out all these other parts of the evaluation, but I'd, I'd like to see more focus on a goal-based evaluation and maybe less emphasis on tabulating numbers.
Well, I certainly think that the goals should be what our goals are, which is aligned with what the town goals should be.
Correct.
And all achieve that in the end.
So, with that being said, do we need at this time to approve this evaluation tool? Or should we schedule another meeting to talk about if we want to make any changes to it and to establish a goal meeting, a meeting to develop goals?
Yeah, I'm okay with continuing to our next meeting to think about this, but this process, we get to, each individually get to meet with Mike Mullin as we're doing our evaluation, and we can discuss goals individually with him. I'm not sure if we, and what we've done in the past is that we each come up with three goals, and then we saw which ones were similar, similar to the board, and we decided which are the three that we felt that were the most important. But your goals may be different from my goals, so, I think I'll sit down with Mr. Mullin, I'll do my evaluation. I'm okay with the numbers. We've done this in the past. Obviously, the goals are an important aspect of it, but I think also an evaluation on different aspects of his job is important. I'm, I'm supporting that what's in front of us, but I also feel that we should not vote on this particular evaluation process tonight.
You know, as I look at this, I see evaluator has two goals, employee has two goals. I just wonder, I guess ultimately, four goals is...
Oh, yeah, like, my contract calls for three, but whether it's three or four, I mean, I mean, I, oh, yeah, like, I mean, I, we, we're, like, in my view, we're, like, we're responsible for accomplishing things. And, like, I mean, other reality is, I mean, I think I and we and together we accomplish way more, oh, you know, than, oh, two, three, four things a year anyways, so, like, I don't, oh, you know, I don't really think, I mean, I'd like, oh, yeah, like, goals that are, like, attainable, practical, and realistic. Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, I don't have any problem working to identify them. I'm not, oh, you know, I mean, I don't have a preference, three or four. Oh, you know, I mean, again, those are just, you know, those are goals, but, oh, you know, there's also many other things that, that come up in a day that are unpredictable, oh, you know, that become all part of our goals and things we need to address anyways, so, oh, you know, but I do think, just in the evaluation, then I'll stop talking, but, I, oh, you know, like, I do think, and especially the way the, they propose updated evaluation really tries to draw different, Alec, issues and questions out, oh, you know, like, I'm a very big fan, as I think each of you know, and hopefully everyone knows, I'm a big fan of, oh, you know, really like free flow of information. I want to know, and I think these, oh, you know, these prompts, oh, you do a decent job of, like, of drawing things out, so, even though, so hypothetically, hypothetically, you might like me, you might, oh, think I'm doing a good job, but you do have a concern in the area. Like, I actually think it's extremely healthy to, I have a tool that allows the board to express that concern. Oh, you know, like, it, oh, yeah, and for me to be able to acknowledge, learn, and address it. I mean, I think that's a healthy, um, yeah, like, I'm a big goal-based person, but I think there are things here, like, in the evaluation, I think that if I don't, that if I didn't hear, oh, you know, like, we would be all really doing a disservice, oh, you know, oh, to the role to why I'm here, what I do for you in, in the town as well, but that's just my thought.
One of the things that we did do when I was on the school committee was that we came up with a school committee narrative, or if you will, the final evaluation, which was a summation of all the individual evaluations. Are we required by law to read each individual evaluation as we did last year?
No.
We are not?
And I know, and that's actually, I mean, that could run, Alec, actually, like, a follow, as the guidance mentions of violating the open meeting law as well. Alec, yeah, the guidance actually provided, actually recommends, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, that specifically, like, individual evaluations and not, like, actually read, like, in the public, yeah, like, in the public session, what is, what it, Alec, is like an aggregate summary.
A summary?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I like. Now, are we allowed to go into executive session to create that summary?
No, it's all public, all open.
It's my understanding, though, that Karen will look at all three of our
Yeah, and try to...
evaluations, and then combine them
Yes.
For one evaluation.
Yes, and then find some common themes in terms of goals, in terms of a potential discussion point that we could all use. The goals really aren't, yeah, there's nothing, in my opinion, that prevents, oh, you know, like, frankly, 15 goals being thrown on the table, and then we all, like, in open session, really decide from there what the, oh, what the narrowed-down goals are going to be.
So Karen would average out the, the numbers?
Yes.
And then that would get reported?
Yes.
And then that the goals would be discussed in open session?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with that. Are there any further questions?
No.
No. Next on the agenda, yes?
Can I make a motion? Make a motion to take this proposed town administrator's review process under advisement until the November 30th, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public input. Mrs. Gulat.
Thank you.
I don't see any one, oh, okay.
You know, if he didn't, he was going to say something.
No, 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 I, I concentrate on the public audience, and I sometimes forget to check, and I notice Laura Mederes has her hand raised. So I won't forget her.
Okay. Nancy Gulat, 631 Great Terrace, Snott-Dighton. I want to give you a report on the MMA meeting that I went to, but this, the topic that you just finished discussing, that you're, you're going to be taking up, the evaluation form that was put together was used for all professional employees. If you, and, and my thought is, if you're going to change the form, is it only going to be for the town administrator, or is it going to be for all of those employees? When we put it together, it was because it was for professional employees, and the town administrator used that format, that form, to evaluate the department head, so forth and so on, so that, and that was the form we used to evaluate her. So, my only thought is fairness, since the form that was used for all professional employees, if it's modified, I think it should be across the board. As far as goals go, the first time we used that form for the town administrator, there were some goals listed. After that first round of using that form, we agreed, when I say we, the board of selectmen and the town administrator agreed at the time, some of the wording needed to be revised because it was rather elementary and really didn't apply. We never got to that stage because she left before we actually implemented it. But I just wanted you to know ahead of time that you should be aware that, that that form is used for others, so, if, if, if it's revised across the board, it's probably going to be okay. Another situation we had that had to get corrected, this, we, the first time we used it, we didn't have a score. FinCom wanted us to somehow score performance, so the next time we used it, I worked with the town administrator, we came up with a scoring method. Unfortunately, there was, it dealt with goals, and there was one employee who had no idea what goals were about, had never ever dealt with this, and therefore, didn't have any. And initially, there was a, it detracted from her score, let me put it that way. But anyhow, we worked through it, and, but the concern is that, obviously, a professional person understands goal setting. I mean, I think we've all been exposed to it somewhat, somewhere out there, but not every employee is familiar with the process and what my recommendation was. The purpose of evaluation is to improve performance, and that's why we have, you can have an interim, a evaluation, because if a new employee is having, or an experienced employee is having problems with performance, or something new, new duty has been given to them, it's up to administration to work with them, to bring them along, and that, and interim evaluation would be a period of time when you could discuss what kind of problems you have in with this task, and what can we do to help with this, all right? So, that's just something else to think about, but
Thank you.
Again, this is kind of history about how this evolved and where it is now. Getting back to the MMA meeting, so, it was the 28th of October, we met at Stone Hill College. This was the MMA legislative breakfast meetings that they have around the state, and Easton was the closest one for me to attend. There was a review of the legislation that had been passed, the supplemental budget, and things like increases in Chapter 70, Chapter 90, in, increases in unrestricted local aid, which is the town aid, because 70 is education and 90 is roads. The increase in regional school transportation reimbursement, it's still not at 100%, but it's improved. Increase in the circuit breaker account, which is special needs. There was a gentleman there who spoke, Senator Brady, whose area includes Brockton and some of the surrounding communities. And what he discussed was that the city of Brockton is again, or still is, interested in purchasing Aquaria, and the attempt is that, because of the water shortages that everyone has experienced, Norton and Mansfield are interested in buying water from Brockton if they buy the plant. When that pipeline was proposed, that was part of the selling point, that they would be able to provide water all the way to Brockton for anybody along the line that wanted to tie in. Well, well, none of them have been allowed to tie in, so now this discussion is taking place again about Brockton acquiring Aquaria. So, when he got through explaining that, and when it was my turn, I said to him, I would like to discuss that because I'm from Dayton, and I believe Aquaria is probably our second highest taxpayer in town, and I understand the need for water. I think it's unfortunate that when we talk about the need for drinking water, everyone looks at their own little turf. I said, my community has been part of that drought, and all the communities around, like that, except Somerset. Somerset's got lots of water. But again, when that reservoir was built, it was going to service Dayton, Swansea, and Somerset, and that fell apart. And so Swansea built their own, I think it's reverse osmosis on the river, excuse me. So, we, I think water needs to be looked at across the board, not just, I'm going to take care of my own town or my own area. But in response to what you're talking about, I said, if Brockton acquires Aquaria and you intend to provide water to other communities, that's good because we will tax you, because you're going, you're going to be selling a product at a profit.
Correct.
So, the other thing I would mention is, this has come up repeatedly about Brockton acquiring Aquaria, and the concerns from the assessors' office about taxes. And Mrs. Boragad had mentioned that there was a clause in the agreement that if the plant were to be sold to another community, someone who's not taxable, taxes would continue to be paid for a certain number of years. So, that's just something you should be aware of, but
Thank you.
Senator Brady's interested in pursuing this for his turf, so I just mentioned this, just so you know it's coming. The talk about using the DR students, the last time we used DR students was to build the reindeer and the sleigh. We had to, we had to build Tuffy the train, and, because everything had worn out, the train was worn out, the Toyota that was in there had died. And when we met up at the landfill, we, Mr. Ferry and I, met with representatives from BP, because they wanted to see what we had. And it was decided then, because BP has the metal shop and the various ways of decorating the train, fabrication, everything that goes into that, that BP would build Tuffy, and that, we met with DR and their carpentry students, built a new sleigh, and I think they repaired the trailer and built all new reindeer, cut them out, the whole thing. So, that was the last big project that I'm aware of, but just so you know that, because we have used them in the past.
How long ago was that?
And we kind of spread out the work because of the capabilities of BP with their sheet metal and graphic arts and all that.
How long ago was that?
I'm thinking it was 2016, Mr. Smith? So, along those lines, there is a CD of the life of Tuffy the Train, and I let Mr. Mullin borrow it, and I asked them if they had one, and they said they'd look, but we talked about this, and it would be nice if we could put it on Channel 9 for the new children that have come along. It's a great story. It's really great. Mr., well, actually, it was, it was Patch's, it's a production of Patch's Smith, and he is at the, he or she?
She.
She's at the end of this film, but if, if we could do that, it would be great.
Thank you very much.
You mentioned me being on the Financial Advisory Committee. I can tell you that Mr. Schwartz was on, obviously, he's not here, but Kevin Perry and Robert Rendon at times served on that. I remember them being there. So, we, you've got a couple of more experienced people when it, I know FinCom has to appoint them.
Yes, Mr. Rendon is still on that commi, is still on FinCom, so...
Yeah. The story about the molasses, if you go on Google and put in Dayton Highway molasses, you'll, you'll see a film that Channel 10 did. They did a story about Mr. Ferry, and it's molasses, rock salt, and magnesium, and when you mix all that up, it actually raises the temperature so that the water doesn't freeze at 32. Eventually, it's going to freeze, but when they put that out before a storm, it, I'll say it kind of delays the freezing of whatever is coming down. I remember teasing Mr. Ferry, saying, am I going to have ants in my garage from driving through molasses? No, that's going to happen. But anyhow, that story is out there, so if you Google that, it'll come up.
No, thank you.
It was, it was a good, great story. And to wrap this up... And to wrap this up, all of what you're talking about of solid waste, this has been a topic repeatedly of the committee I serve on. We've been working on a number of legislative issues trying to get, we knew ahead of time, November first, the bomb was gonna be dropped about no mattresses, with no solution to the communities. It's just that you can't do it anymore.
Right.
And there are plants in Massachusetts that, uh, take mattresses from Connecticut and Rhode Island. And yet Massachusetts was not, for some reason, able to use them. That was an issue that came up at one of our meetings. There is a proposal out there, legislation, because we've discussed this, we've discussed, uh, supporting it, that would add a disposable fee every time a mattress is purchased. They threw out a number, something like four dollars per mattress. And this money would go into a fund to help pay for the disposal of mattresses. Another thing, encourage the public to purchase mattresses in Box Springs from stores that take them back. A lot of them do that. So anyhow, the, the Policy Committee on Energy and the Environment has been working on this. The other thing we've added to it, along with mattresses, is the manufacturer's responsibility for packaging. You know, sometimes you got a, a box delivered to your house, and you got a small thing in there. You gotta go through all this stuff to get to it, whether it's bubble wrap or foam or shredded whatever. All of that is waste. And the feeling is it's unnecessary. So they're talking about, uh, legislation that would really put responsibility on manufacturers for helping to dispose of packaging. Because even that has become so expensive to everybody that, um...
But these are suggested legislation?
It's legislation that's been discussed.
Is it in the pipe?
Um...
Pipeline?
I don't believe it is.
So it'll be a while before?
But I, I had an MMA meeting today, but I had, I had two meetings here, and I didn't get to it. So when I get the feedback from them, I'll know what was on that. But, um, just so you know, that, that we've been trying to do something about this. But, you know, mattresses are just a nightmare.
Do you get communications from them?
Yes.
Could you forward that to solid waste people?
Yeah, absolutely.
I can send it to, uh, Mr. Karen?
That'd be great.
Yeah, um, I'll go back and look through some of the old minutes and see if there's references in there.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, it is, uh, it, it's a very, a very serious topic, and everyone's paying dearly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Madeiras, yes?
Hi, um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Okay, um, I just wanted to give an update on, um, I know in the beginning of the meeting, you mentioned how we're not live on Channel Nine.
That's correct.
So I just wanted to give an update. Most people will be listening to this either on YouTube. I'll go in tomorrow and upload this to YouTube or a rerun on Channel Nine. But we have contacted our, um, company that does our server. It gets us running on Channel Nine. The only concern that I have is that with it being Veterans Week, I'm not sure what their business hours are looking like. So we're hoping to get it resolved soon. So if you, oh, you guys are open tomorrow, huh? I was gonna say, if you're getting calls to the office, but you guys won't be there, right?
Oh, they'll be there tomorrow.
No, town hall is closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. But if there are any calls, Laura, to the Selectman's Office, we actually see those voicemails and email, uh, so we can address them as needed.
Okay, um, yeah, so, and hopefully that with this being up on YouTube, if people were trying to see something on Channel Nine, this will hopefully be helpful. But we just don't know the timeline really right now of when we can get back up and running on the physical Channel Nine. So I just wanted to kind of put that out here, that it is currently being, in the works of being resolved. We're unsure really what happened with it, so.
Thank you, Laura.
And I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further input?
Gotta get it fixed in time to show Tuffy.
Yes.
I have a question, though, is, will Tom Gary be around tomorrow?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so if he does show up, and someone's gotta let him in.
Yes.
If Gary comes tomorrow, he's up on a contact to fix our servers and things.
Okay.
So if he shows up tomorrow while I was working or whatever, if someone can notify Tom, we can just let him in the room, if that's possible. Just a help of a process.
Yeah, we can absolutely figure that out.
No, I thought, I knew Mr. Ferry was working. I thought the apartments were open half a day, but...
Um, unknown, and a no, it's...
Just Mr. Ferry?
Primetime.
The Council on Aging is also open, so Alex, if you have the Council on Aging building, if needed.
Uh, thank you, Laura, yeah, and I'll be around also, so we can help.
Thank you very much. Any further input? Okay, um, I have a piece of correspondence from Executive Director, Council on Aging, Annabelle Powell, in regards to an anonymous donation of fifty dollars. We are pleased to inform you that the D- Dayton Council on Aging has received fifty dollars from an anonymous, excuse me, anonymous donor. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town accountant and deposited in the Council on Aging gift account. Should you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to call me. Annabelle Powell. Questions? With that being said, uh, minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the Board of Selectment regular meeting minutes of October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, ask the Board of Selectmen to approve the following warrants dated from November second, twenty-twenty-two. Eighteen A dash twenty-three, hundred nine thousand, four hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents. Eighteen B dash twenty-three, hundred seven thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-six cents. And eighteen C dash twenty-three, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye.
I'll make a mo, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the warrants dated November ninth, twenty-twenty-two. Nineteen A dash twenty-three, a hundred nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy cents. And nineteen B dash twenty-three, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Motion passes. Is there any further business before us? With that being said, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
It's an aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Thank you, and have a good evening.